Let's count for the federal even speaks.
The President of the United States of America, the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
That's all we got.
That's all we got.
Start out with Matt.
Well, Mr. Sherk, what you got to say for yourself tonight?
I apologize and thanks for all my mistakes and shortcomings.
Well, we don't decide.
Well, you belong in this council then. Get up here.
I know you had some questions and I think some of them might have on the, of course, I've got two separate budgets. It does get somewhat confusing to, I'm here to try to answer any questions you have. Like Kay mentioned something that I do have a position duplicated. So I think that might be.
What page?
Forty-four. It's forty-four. How much other page Jane?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one and forty-four.
Fifty-four and fifty-one. Yeah.
Fifty-one.
And forty-four at the same time.
I agree with what Chris said.
Well, remember he was there when he's had all his questions. Go ahead, duplicate this. Everybody, all scammed with that question.
Right.
I was just checking because they asked me to.
When we originally did the state budget is before I began working on changing the bio records position to a higher paid position. So I included the pay for the office manager in the budget that's now paid by the state. So I do have that on both budgets so we can, you guys can best decide which.
Which one do you want it to not go out of or do want to come out?
Well, my thought was that if we could get, if I did get it approved on the new one, then free up some money on 1159 that I would like to see the council allow us to use for capital improvements or capital. So if we could, if we pay it out of the 1161, then that frees up some money on the 1159. But like I said, we, I don't have a budget towards anything right now, but I know our long-term goal is to relocate hospital health departments. So it can be used for office improvements or anything like that. However, however it can be best viewed. That's why I put it in both of it so we can all decide together where it can best be utilized.
Well, the 1161 is the grant, right?
Correct. So there's money, there's money in 1161 now to pay for that position.
And that's why you'd rather have it come out of?
I really don't have preference. So.
Be better for us if you took it out of 1161.
Yeah. So it wouldn't bother me if we took it out of 1161. For that position and also I included the administration stipend on 1161 and I increased it. So I prefer to have both up myself, but as you know, I've been, I've been doing the administration role for three years now and I've had one stipend of $5,000.
That's way too much, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. So I hope to at least increase that. The council will use some of that to increase the stipend for me.
Why the big jump in group health insurance? It's $69,022.
Is that on?
That's on. Ten, two thirty.
On both?
I'm just going on if there's an increase. Is that because Jane figured?
Um, okay. Well, right now you've got health insurance requested out of both budgets. And so like the other night, one of my questions, in the 1159, you requested $92,000, which would make sense. This year it's at 84. So that would be kind of factoring in in case if it goes up. But then you also requested $69,000 in the 1161. So is that because we're hiring additional staff?
The, in the staff that's been paid on the grants in the past.
Okay.
So we've been, you gotta realize that this is not entirely on the money. You're seeing this as a grant coming through your office for first time. These grants have been coming to the health department just not through the council. So I've had three different employees paid through, well, I've had local health maintenance, I've had the school liaison position and the vaccine administration grant with two employees that were paid through those grants, their salary and their insurance. So the insurance, if it's figured correctly on this, is going to pay for the existing employees that have been paying for through the other grants. They've taken all the grants that we've been getting and consolidated in this new one program. So we've had those, we've had employees paid through grants in their health insurance and salary have been coming out of those grants. And that'll come out of this grant.
So what should we go with? The $69,000 or the $92,000?
I think you just said both.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you realize that there is no reason at all to even, on the 1161, to, to cut it. I mean, because if you cut my budget on 1161, I'm still getting the money and it's just going to sit there and it just keeps spending. So that one doesn't make sense. So 1161 is the amount of money. And like I said, I sent Jane the updated version that was sent to the state. So hopefully we got the correction done where we were at all.
I believe in the, yes, in the adopted budget lines, that 540, if you could see your screen, the 544003, I believe is what you sent me. So yes, I tried to make that match what the state has already approved.
Right. Okay. So yeah. So that's all approved through the state and that's the money they're sending. So that one should be good. What I'd like to do is utilize the 1159 funding in the best way possible and continue to improve the services and provide more services to the community. So.
Now, you've got two nursing supplies, $95,000 and $80,000. Is that, do we keep both of those in too?
I increased the supplies on, I mean, we spent the $95,000, yes, on 1159 or close to it. And then I increased it on the 1161 to give my, buy more supplies because that does buy all of our, that buys all of our vaccine. And the way I understand it, that money which comes out of our levy comes in to buy our vaccine. We get reimbursed for that vaccine and that goes back to the county. So if you cut that, you're going to cut, you're going to cut your returns.
That's what, we make money off that money, don't we?
Yeah.
So we have them both in?
Yes.
And it's not that we, if we, we don't need it, we don't spend it. We are going to be increasing our services with our lab tests and stuff like that. So all our lab tests and all that stuff will come out of the nursing supplies, all our flu shots, all of our TV tests, all of our COVID vaccines, all of that comes out of nursing supplies. And like I said, all that stuff is reimbursed through insurance. So that's reimbursed to the county.
Even on the 1159, only increase for $300, $44.
Yeah. And then like I said, you can go, you can cut out the clerk and just use that 1161. So there is, there is, but like I said, I don't know what that does, how that helps the county budget overall because, yeah, but we're, but we're on our own levy.
I know.
So I mean, I'm not looking for explanation there too, because it doesn't come out of County General.
So are you the sanitarium position that's in the 1159? Is that you?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Why is that one down? And I just double-checked to make sure I entered what you gave me. Because if you're currently at that number.
Plus the stipend?
Which stipend? What's the account number?
Okay. I'm looking at the 11600. I'm thinking that has to be a mistake.
416.
Because if you made 44,450 this year, 44,450 the year before.
You have had the $5,000 stipend.
But that wouldn't cut your regular pay. I'm saying this makes it.
Oh, I thought that was the 44 includes my stipend, doesn't it?
No?
No?
The stipend's on a different line.
Okay. Well, then yeah, that I would.
So you're okay if I put that back to 44,450?
Yes.
Okay. Because that was one of my questions. I almost started confusing myself on the question.
And I get confused because we do, we do the budgets the year before and I don't know that I ever got a copy of the approved or the, the.
Final versions?
The approved statement salaries and wages. So this is this statement salaries and wages that I have is, that I submitted. I had me at 41672. So I guess I didn't change that from the year before.
And then I think the only other question I had, so the sanitary number two is your part-time person right now, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. And then in the budget, the other budget where it says environmentalist, that's the new position that you just are hiring and advertising for right now. Okay. So both of those stay where they're at?
Yeah.
Okay.
So which ones are we eliminating?
I think, I think those were the only questions that I had. So I changed his salary because I think that was, that requested amount was a mistake. And then took out the, since we have the director stipend in the 1161, I took out the supervisor stipend here. And then we took out for the clerk here was the same as the office manager in the other one. So basically in 1161, I didn't change anything. But we did make a couple of changes.
The budget cuts out 1159.
Excuse me.
Like I said, if there's, like I said, if there, I don't know how, unless that leaves on our levy or what's left available, that hopefully we could reinvest that into the health department.
Yeah. It would be, because that's its own fund, whatever extra money would just stay in there to be used for future use.
So it doesn't have to be budgeted to, it'd just be there for.
Yeah. I mean, it won't, it won't go away.
May I, you'll make your sanitary number two full-time? Was that your plans?
I'm hiring a second sanitary to be full-time. The plan was to have that person full-time and then still Bruce on two. There is a possibility that I'm going to offer the position to Bruce. So if Bruce was interested in the full-time position, then that would be the part-time position.
Okay. What, did you have your part-time, I mean, full-time one, the new one that you wanted down here yet?
Yeah, it's on the 1161. And then that's something else I still need to do too is get the 144 done. I don't know if you can do that now or if I need to come back to the next. Because let me again, I have two 144s for the office manager position and environmental position because of half a seventy.
Where is that sanitary number that wouldn't go harm in 1161?
What's, where is it?
I don't see it down here. I mean, it probably is, but.
It's about five up from the bottom, Jim. 10208.
I was looking for something else. I'm sorry.
And then also, even though past several years, my salary's been being reimbursed as well, partially through the preparedness program. So my salary goes back into County General. So I've been getting paid, you've been getting paid to have me as an employee. So, which I try to take care of the banking, any grants and stuff like that. So I don't know if you guys see a lot of that, but like I said, we, we try to be very responsible with everything we do. All of our programs, we, we turn in to the insurance, the payments and get paid for the vaccines and the administration we do. And then like I said, the preparedness program's been reimbursed in part, part of my salary for the last seven, eight years. So maybe a little bit helps. And then that also leaves, we still have the, the only one not on, that's still through the grants is the ALB. So ALB is still paid through the preparedness grant. So he's not on the schedule because he's through release as well. Something we can address.
If they would make a motion, yeah, they can.
Okay. If I can give that to you. I have two 144s for, I listed the, we have this hour budget for 1161, 36, 250.
In your, your budget, the state approved 35, 250 on that line.
Oh, 35, 250.
I don't know that it matters, but that was the.
So those two 144s are in your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And then actually.
The one not for as much.
The one's not?
When one's for less.
Yeah.
So the, the state approved budget has 41 on one. I think I've got this at 39.
So we're going to do the one, right Jane?
No, you could do them both, but I'm just saying you might want to amend this one and make it to match what the state approved. Make it 30, 35, 250 to 36, 250.
I mean, I've got extra money in the sanitarium.
And actually, unless you want this to take effect right now, we wouldn't have to do this until December when you do salary ordinances. Because no matter what you approve right now, you can change it in December when you do the salary ordinance.
And I, and there is extra, there is extra money for that part position that's unlegitimate at the state. So we couldn't make that to 36, 250. All I have to do is give the, to the state with the extra money. Because they did send another $2,000. That's, I, what happens if the state goes out and sends all the money and then it come up with this pool at the end and says, we have this much money left, so it's divided up between nine, two counties. So I would get only another $2,000.
Just to put this in perspective for you, right now, that position, that person is making $25,700. So if you give this 36, 250, you're giving them basically an $11,000 increase. So just so you know what you're.
We have two salaries for the nurse now. Is that?
Two different nurses.
Forty-five.
Bob, let us finish the, right now, what's on the table.
And what position is that again?
I mean, the $36,000 raises it 20 bucks now.
At what position is it again?
It's the, what has been called is the registrar or the clerk in the past, the office manager. So like we have an existing salary ordinance that allows that office manager pay to be the 25, 706 that she's currently making. But commissioners approved, Matt made a great case for why she should be considered, instead of being CO MOT, that she should be considered PAT, professional and technical, because she's having additional training and things and additional requirements from the state. So the state puts out, I'm sorry, Matt, I'm talking for you. Is that okay?
No, you got it.
So the state put out suggested salaries. So that's where he's coming from on this, is the suggested salaries. I was just saying, though, if somebody's trying to make a comparison, just so you knew where she was and why the change.
Yeah. So we reclassified her position. She has a professional position now. And like her pay required, that, that pay scale. So the 20, and the $25,000 for a salary is not even close to where it is.
And then if you want to do this right now, whoever makes a motion, say that in your motion, please, that you want it effective, like on the next pay period or whatever.
You need it sooner, you need.
I would, the sooner I can get this through, and I've got that money in the budget, in this year's budget to pay her the extra salary. So if we can get that through, then it does increase her pay and, and it's been, so I am here to ask for that motion to, to be able to pay her the money that's already in the budget from last year's budget to the state.
Just for public, since they're watching, the two accounts we're talking about are only for your department. So it's not like anybody else can use it. I'm just saying that for the public's knowledge. So is he asking for two 144s or one full-time, one part-time? Or both full-time?
They're both full-time. And the second, I can't hire, there's, so there is to, the first one will immediately change the pay of the, of the position. The second one will allow me to hire the second permanent specialist, which that money's in the budget as well for this year. I just can't hire anyone until salary is set. So.
Are they registered nurses or? I see.
Yeah. This position is not, the 35, that position is not a registered, I'm sorry. Other nurses are registered. She's a medical tech. She has radiology training in her past. And then also she's junior medical training in our office to do all of our scheduling. And then just a real valuable resource for our office. And she has that medical background.
Jane, you said the commissioners already approved it?
They approved the change in classification. Yes.
On both of them?
Yeah. Well, the, the one, they didn't have anything to do with it. But the, the office manager to make that a PAT position, yes. Like Matt gave them different job descriptions and the information from the state and they reviewed all that. Yeah.
So I mean, that budget's, that budget's from the state. It won't affect the county at all. Those positions will be paid for the state. And with that money, I think we see the pay we went in and cut 1159 because of that money. So we're adding positions and less money's coming out of the local. So it's a win-win for us to help, or it's win-win for Bay County.
Right. And more services are being supplied. I'll make a motion to approve the two 144s for the health department.
Second.
All in favor?
First, a second. All in favor, sing five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to jump right in there.
Waiting for Sharon to say something.
All right. But yeah, so, so I mean, as far as the 1159, since we did have that duplicated, I mean, we don't need it on 1159. So yeah, that, that will reduce. I think everything else was pretty close as far as numbers go. So.
Okay. You got that out there, Jane?
What about the remodeling costs?
The remodeling cost is on this budget, on the 1161 has an option. If we stay in that office, we can do some remodeling. But that also can, I believe, can be carried over. So we're putting it in there as capital because the way the budget works, we're allowed to spend 10% on capital improvements of the new money. So if they do say we can carry that over. So if we find that our best option is going to be do some remodeling, add some office or the exam rooms to the conference rooms, what I thought was. Because we have the conference room down there now that we're doing our vaccines and stuff in. It'd be much more beneficial down there if we stay in that position to have someone come in and actually do a couple of walls, fill a couple of doors on it and wash sinks and stuff like that. So it'd be more like a medical.
Yeah. Is that part of the repair and maintenance budget you got on there too?
Yeah. So that would be beneficial. The other option would be if we were to relocate to a area that has this room because we are tied on the place. And like I said, we continue to add more and more services. So that's the goal. My goal is to improve Bay County and health in general. That's the state's goal with this new budget is to improve the state's health.
Right.
And I would like to.
Was Indiana's 41, right?
I'm not, leave her down there. We're moving down. Yeah.
Yeah, we're prepared.
We're, we're 91 in Bay County here at the state. So.
I think Indiana's 41 across.
So it's, it's good, it's a good program to increase the spending on that.
I don't have any more questions.
Are you comfortable with $25,000, Kay?
Yeah, I'm good with it. It's grant money.
I see you've had a big jump with the environmentalist. 41, 5, 26.
Is there a question?
Yeah, why the, why the jump, I guess.
On which budget?
Environment, it's on the 1161.
That's the new position. That's a new position that the state's given us money for.
Well, the state's paying that?
The state pays that whole budget.
I think he's kind of, last year we approved 26 for that line.
Yeah. Last year's budget from the state was for, if you compare it to last year, last year's budget was for six minutes. This year's budget's for 12. That budget for last year started July. So that's why those numbers are, are basically half from the 1161 numbers. And like I said, the state does supply all that stuff. So. But I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming back in.
No problem.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Okay. Jane, where, where are we as far as the budget's concerned?
I don't know that we.
About a half a million over.
Okay. You mean County General when you're saying that, right? I would think you would not want to pass that budget at 9.6. So.
I'm continuing to talk to Sharon. Sharon, I'm all here to let her know I was going in just a little late. She, she thought that we were, I was under pressure. She told me that she thought we were supposed to cover Matt Sherk in recess until tomorrow night. Did you hear that, Jane, or?
We could do that. Or since we're all here, we could keep working.
That's where I'm at. But I didn't know if she related it to you or not.
I, I was talking to Sharon and it was actually Kay suggested to Sharon that we do that. And Sharon said we could and she would be available. But I said that if enough of you were here, that we could go ahead and keep working through it. And that's up, that's up to you guys.
Why, why? I was here.
I mean, you're not going to make any final decisions, but I would, I would think there are things that could be discussed and I really hated that Sharon missed it, but.
To discuss the things that you and I went over yesterday. That's why the budget may be different from where it was. And I think we need to address the public safety tax because we're, we're hitting JIL it too hard, more than what it brings in. I think the sheriff's will have to go on the six and now one has to go on the five. Fire Department, this is 44. I think, was that what we talked about?
Yes, I think so.
I need it to five out of the, so they get 49 total.
So you want to put, they get them down now?
I don't want to, but we, we can't, it's hitting us too hard.
I'll go with the 45. I mean, you put the five back in, Reese Department, I brought back up to 50, correct?
It'd be 49. It's a thousand, Chad.
Thousand, thousand dollars.
Well, you know, this is, this is going to take a hit too. Sheriff's Department 901. There's just not enough money going on.
Even though County General sent it seven million dollars.
That's, that's not, that's a surplus. We, we have to address that too. And the things, things that, that salaries can't be a part of that. If we're going to say it's going to be a rainy day fund, we're going to take out of it. That's, has to be something sustainable. And that surplus is not something that's a sustainable thing. And with the, the commissioners, that 1.5 million, I said, you know, have them come back and say a rainy day fund. Let's say we move 1.5 million from the surplus into the rainy day fund. So that's covered for them. And they're not hitting what we currently have in it. Because we only got $500,000 for women's work. We said it's sitting there and may or may not be used. And then looking at other cuts, one thing I can see is, is the vehicles. The sheriff put that in the rainy day fund too. It's not taking it away from you. It's not taking away from you, Chad. It's still there. But it helps our county, it helps our bottom, bottom line. We have to get down $500,000. We have to get down five hundred thousand dollars.
What I was asking earlier is, you figured the number of five, the actual number was a little over that. So, what happens with the remainder money?
What remainder money?
If you're figuring five and the income is actually five-two or whatever.
Okay, you take out your hundred fifty, you take, you take it, there's your hundred fifty thousand right off the top. What does it leave left? Five hundred thousand, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, to split between two departments.
Um, so, what I'm saying though is, if you get more in, how is that gonna be divided out? Is it gonna be part of that?
If it gets more in, it just sits in, just sits in the.
We'll revisit it next year and budget again.
No, it just sits there, I'll just question, it just sits there for right now.
Right.
We just go in more, it goes to the year ne, the year after. You guys, I keep finding this a burst irrigating, as we don't know exactly what we're going to be bringing in. We can't hit it, if we do it like that, we're not, we're not putting a burden on the jail lift, all right, Jane?
Right.
You keep talking about the jail lift.
We're only bringing in, how much, Jane? Nine hundred eighty thousand?
Nine twenty-something.
We've budgeted, right now, we've budgeted with your reasons, where we stand right now, we're hitting the jail lift like one point two million?
That's if you give all ten jail officer raises.
Yes.
That's seven thousand.
I think more than ten are coming out of there.
Well, good thing is, is county, community corrections is gonna pay for three of those at a hundred and twenty some thousand, so.
I, I, I take it out, I'm only budgeting seven, so that's not for all ten of them. If I put this back and make it all ten of them, it's gonna be a larger number than that.
So, we figured that we would bring in five hundred and, maybe five hundred twenty thousand, we're planning to save and save five hundred thousand. The way we're doing now, with what I just said, we're at five hundred and two thousand. Or so, we're going slightly above what we're projecting to bring in in our buffer.
Just a little bit, I'm not in favor of changing what we had talked about the other night for those guys.
I don't see how the jail lift is, you're adding seventy thousand dollars in raises, but you're taking out three employees that will be paid for. I don't see how those numbers are divided.
Because we, with the, with the seven employees that we were taking out, that have been there, we are over, what we, we're exceeding what we will bring in for the jail lift. So, we can't, we can't do it, there's just, money's just not there. It only goes so far.
I disagree, I disagree, sit down, do the numbers.
That's what we've been doing, Chad.
Zach.
Is that, Zach?
Jane.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Why are you pointing, Chad?
Is it sitting there, maybe?
No.
Well, I'm confused, I thought we had this figured out.
We did.
It, it's unsustainable, though, I mean, you can't even pass that budget the way you wanted to pass that budget, because we didn't request enough to be able to pass that. So, the best you could do is pass a partial budget and then come back and request an additional appropriation after the first year, you're just taking a chance what the state says now. And they won't allow that additional appropriation, then what are you gonna do?
Some of the lit?
Mm-hmm, the twelve thirty-three.
Well, I, I asked for ten jail officers in the lit.
Okay.
And now, we're taking away three, so that should give us money to play with.
Okay, if I put your ten in, this is where we're at, I cannot, we cannot.
That's what pay raises, if you take the pay raises out.
Okay, so make this three sixty?
Three ninety's what I asked, three ninety's what I asked for.
But you didn't include the other stuff, so. I'm seven, so let me make sure we get all this in here, and I'll show you where we're at. We're still almost, is that a hundred thousand?
Of course.
We could take one person out of county general.
We're already, we're burning, county general, I have the money.
And this stuff was usually coming out of, you're having county general.
It's not, it's coming out of here, we just didn't budget it for it. But the money follows the fund, so the people that are being paid from here, their benefits follow here.
And then when you take out three jail officers from this one, that knocks it down by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, correct? So, if you just budget for seven of these, that takes it down to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Which is where I had us all ago, this is seven at point two, so this is seven with six thousand dollars, well, from thirty-six to forty-two.
How many services can you?
Is what these numbers were, if I slide those back in that place, then that makes this a sustainable budget.
Contractual services.
I know.
Six thousand dollars.
So, seven at forty-three is not sustainable?
I had them there at one point, but it's, I just, we're doing this, I keep playing with the numbers, so. That can be, yes.
So, seven, taken out of the jail lit?
Here, but then what happens if we put seven in eleven seventy, it doesn't work. And the, the attitude the other night was, put it in jail lit, but then you can't, because we got jail lit right where jail lit needs to be.
Where does seven take us on?
Uh, hang on, that's what the spreadsheet over here is, okay.
Well, it would be seven, it would be forty-one, forty-one officers, because we have forty-eight.
Two, three, and five, okay. Okay, to go ahead and give you guys the seven and nine one-one, the six that we had talked about the other night, would be a total of three hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars. So, just for now, so I don't have to keep three out of these numbers, hang on. And I'm just gonna throw it down here, I totaled my three seventy-five, five sixty-six. It's a.
It's a five hundred, five oh seven. To give us and nine one-one the raises that we talked about yesterday, jail lit is under budget, is from what we're going to get. And then the public safety tax is at five hundred and seven as opposed to five hundred thousand.
Does that work, Jane?
Numbers work, I think.
Then I'm fine with this, the numbers we went over here yesterday came out different. We're gonna do the.
And then community corrections pays for the other three, as long as the commissioners make them.
I'm not, I'm obviously sitting here, I think you know the good and well enough, that I'm not, I never wanna cut services or raises for private partners, you know that all the way.
I know.
But I've also got responsibility to the budget to make sure that it works.
I think it works, we're a little high on public safety than where you guys wanted to be, but we were guessing eight hundred thousand on the jail lit and we're getting nine hundred. So, hopefully, the public safety tax comes in higher and.
Well, the actual number was guessed at five, five twenty-six.
Eight, eight, six, which is just a guess, keep in mind, and you can't pass a budget for more than five.
Does that put us at forty-five and five, or does that put us at?
Forty-four and five.
Uh.
Right now, you're at four, you were at forty-four. Do you wanna throw that back up there? So, again, what you're gonna have to do is, you can only budget five, so after the first year, you'll have to come back for an additional appropriation that I don't know that the state will approve, because.
How much do we have to come back for?
I'm sorry?
How much will we have to come back for?
Well, if you pass this budget right now at five eighteen, eight eighty-six.
Eighteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand.
Yeah. That grant that Ben Bill just got, did you guys get the benefit from that?
That's just from Ben Bill.
Now, the way we're looking here, what's it doing to the fire department?
Right now, there, the forty-five, we agreed to the other night, and then they would still get the five from the highway department, so they'll be getting fifty a piece.
What if we do, could the highway department sustain another thousand, another three thousand?
Well, if you remember, Commissioner Strong asked you to take it out of the highway department, because the highway department is in desperate straits right now. So, I, I don't know that asking him to do more.
How about the highway department?
We need every dime we've got down there, and our revenues are not increasing for highway.
They dropped you two or three hundred thousand last year, didn't they, Dale?
It wasn't last year, but it was year before.
Hundred and sixty thousand, wasn't it, something like that?
But you're getting services also, you're getting services from the fire department that you would have to fund if it wasn't for them.
I meant to make, that's a huge cost to the county, look what they're doing.
It is huge.
You can't, you can't, you can't place that service to provide.
Do we need to revisit the health and safety tax?
That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about. Now, Zach, the seventy thousand for your vehicle, that doesn't go away, it's still there for you. It's just sitting in the rainy day fund. It just helps county general.
As long as when we come over and ask for it.
It's kinda like, it's kinda like Dale, instead of what I suggested the other day, just come and ask for county general, or the rainy day fund. We take from our surplus, correct, Jane? Move that into the rainy day fund, and it's there for both of you. Not take it away, but it's just one of the things, so, so the way I'm looking at it like this, makes sense. Anything that does not have to be sustainable going forward, so I'm thinking like, building infrastructure changes, things that will be a one-time hit. Boilers, boiler b, boilers.
One, one right now, the other two will wake up.
We got that surplus sitting there, put it in the rainy day fund for, for actual use that we needed for the future. Because this way, Dale does not come back in two years, it's, it's there, if we just get to the tuck pony this year, it's there for, right, Dale?
Hopefully, yeah.
It's there for you.
We better put it earmarked, put in the Excel spreadsheet and give everybody, they have a copy, so you're not going off of hearsay or what I remember.
It's in the text, she's already changed it. Does everybody understand?
I get where you're coming from, I just, we're on a pretty good rotation right now and trying to keep our vehicles going and.
It's not changing rotation, it will not impact you. If it does, you can come and arrest me.
Okay, your vehicles are still in your county general budget, this was just extra.
What's that?
You still have money in your county general budget for vehicles, this was just extra. If we didn't totally eliminate, are we talking about vehicles and I lost?
Yeah, we're talking about seventy thousand for vehicles.
Okay, that's still in your county general budget. And that's where it's at?
That's where I see it at.
Hang on.
Yeah, it's not in jail lit, it's in county general, I think.
Yeah, it's still there.
I haven't spent it yet?
So, no, I meant for next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We didn't take it out of your budget.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Oh.
Same for the rainy day fund.
Did I miss?
So, are you saying, take it and put it in the rainy day fund, is that what you're saying?
But you're talking about the hundred that was requested out of public safety, right? Because we requested, your seventy's still in county general, plus we requested a hundred out of public safety. So, the public safety, yeah, the public safety's what just got taken away, not your, not anything else but anything else.
Yeah, he's talking about seventy on the general.
For the vehicles, to help county general?
Yeah.
Take and move that seventy that they have in there to the rainy day fund.
See, I'm lost, that's where I was, that's where I'm trying to catch up, what are we doing here, okay.
I'm seeing the.
Are we done with public safety before we start talking about something else?
Yeah, I hope.
Okay.
Well, we did do the sixty-five thousand, back out, right?
So, tell me what.
I think he's saying was take the seventy.
The sixty-five definitely had to come out of there, that didn't even make sense. We gotta cut this by eighteen, eight, eighty-six, because you cannot pass a budget for more than you requested, so where do you want me to take that?
So, what's the evil for in there?
Vehicle's already gone, just look at the adopted column, that's leaving the raises, and then that's the social security and retirement that goes along with those raise amounts.
Are you talking about the three thousand dollar raise from, or what else too? I couldn't, eighteen thousand.
Right now, I'm in public safety, I'm talking the seven thousand for sheriff and jail and the six thousand for nine one-one. Right now, that budget's at five eighteen, eight eighty-six, and we've got to get it down to five hundred.
I'm going from five oh seven to five eighteen.
So, are you saying that, me, right now?
Fire department back up.
Why are there a six and five instead of seven and six?
So, we have to cut eighteen thousand dollars.
They're at seven and six right now, okay.
Well, with the six and five.
Well, that's not what anybody wants to do.
Well, I'm sorry.
So, right now.
I wanted ice cream instead of dinner too, but my mommy would've let me have it, it just wasn't on the menu.
So, so, right now, at seven thousand dollar raises for forty-one, because we've got seven in the oven, right? Not ten, we're already counting seven.
So.
So, we need a forty-eight, so, okay, right now, seven thousand raises at forty-one people's two eighty-seven, plus the thirty-six, to do six thousand each for six, nine one-one, is three twenty-three. So, that's the number I've got there, is the three twenty-three, so that's seven thousand for sheriff and jail, six thousand for nine one-one, and thirty-five? No, how much a piece for the, forty-five a piece for the fire department?
For the voluntary fire departments?
Yeah.
They would've been thrilled at twenty-five thousand.
I mean, I could just randomly.
Where are you getting that at?
Okay, stop.
Because you haven't got anything now, nothing.
I can just randomly take it out.
The city won't give you anything either.
If you, if you take every entity that's getting this, and take the eighteen, eight eighty-six, and see what that is per entity, other, you understand what I'm saying?
Since it's divided by three.
If you got, not well, that, or if you take the total number of wages, the total, the raises of everybody, the fire department, the whole thing, and divide each one of those individually by eighteen, eight eighty-six, what are you taking out of each one of those?
So, you're saying reduce each one by?
It'd be very thin.
Four percent or something like that, right?
I mean, maybe that's what we have to do.
So, then you're saying we need to come back and ask for additionally, maybe not get after the first of the year, you're saying we need to get down five hundred thousand dollars?
But if we can, if we can, if there's another way to come back after the first of the year and ask for that nineteen thousand dollars, I think we need to come back and ask for it.
I, I'm just saying, there's a possibility, the state doesn't automatically approve additional appropriations, sometimes they will deny them, and my.
Then, if that state.
If it gets denied at the state level, what would you do?
What are you gonna do then?
Take it out of the rainy day fund. We got to pay these people.
There's gotta be something that could be sustainable.
There's, there's a way to do it, there's a way to do it, can I give you that way to do it? No, but there's gotta be a way to do it. We've got to pay these people.
We've got to protect the taxpayer that voted in the office too, Jane.
We've got to pay the people that protect the taxpayers. We've got to pay them. You do nothing but take.
Well, it's not like they're working volunteers, you know?
It's like you, it's constantly take away, take away, take away.
We're not taking away anything, we're getting everybody wanting more money, that everybody likes that five hundred thousand.
I want more money too.
We're not taking anything away from anybody.
There's got to be a way to do it and pay the people. The county's got some money.
It's a question of how much we can do it, Tim, and stay within budget.
We're at nineteen thousand dollars, Bob, to pay all of these people. Can this county not come up with nineteen thousand dollars?
Apparently not, or we wouldn't be having this problem right now.
She's doing the math.
Okay, if anybody were to might get, well, I would do right now, and, and I'm not saying take. Okay, if anybody wanted my opinion, well, I would do right now, and I'm not saying take it away from them, I would just reduce the donation line because that's going to be the easiest one. Because your salary are based on real numbers and your social security and retirement are based on real numbers, your donation, we can give a donation from another fund. So we can restore then to the forty-five apiece, it's going to be easier to give a donation from another fund than it's going to be to try to calculate salaries and social security and retirement.
Would it be, would there be something we could take from the, I can give you the rainy day fund.
Hey, I mean, we could sign contracts with Matta County General or something like you have the Highway Department, I mean, there would be a way to do it, I'm saying that would be for, for.
That's what I'm seeing too.
I just see that for, for right now, in this budget, the simplest way to get that number close to five hundred thousand would be to drop that line to one sixteen and then we'll make it up somewhere else later.
We've got to make the commitment, we're going to make it up though.
I'm sorry?
We've got to make the commitment with that.
Yes, well, I'm sure, I think you all have made that clear, that that's the majority, yes.
For one, for one year.
Because it's all up to you guys as we're budgeting.
For one year until we see what we bring in.
Yeah.
My suggestion is I need to.
And if the state will approve it, we just do an additional and boom, it takes care of it. I'm just saying if, worst case, because sometimes that's my role, is at the beginning of the year, if the state doesn't approve an additional preparation, so we cannot make those out of here, we could make them out of somewhere else and, and move on.
All right, let's go for it.
Okay, at least this way, this right now is a fundable budget and we can checkmark it and move on.
Let's go for it.
So for everybody's peace of mind here, can we, is that something we can take out of rainy day fund, which comes to show?
Mike, can we take a million dollars out of the rainy day fund to help fund that building over there?
The building.
We've only pledged five hundred.
Work release.
We pledged five hundred out of rainy day.
Five hundred, five, out of rainy day, yeah, that's something we set up two or three years ago in case of these emergencies.
I think we've pledged one.
Are you sure?
Five hundred dollars.
I think we did pledge a million.
It was, it was five hundred at one point and then there were some cost issues and we had to do something else, I believe, I believe we pledged one.
We needed a million out of that one point five.
We pledged five, we had to go a million.
She's going to look it up.
I can.
I could be wrong, but. Well, they needed a million and a half and we put up one.
I'm just really quick going back to jail lit, so I want to make sure we're good here. Now, so the three, the three of one was forty-three, seven employees at forty-three, and then I did forty-one out of the other, and that's forty-eight that we agreed was our number, right? Okay.
And didn't Community Corrections say that they would reimburse us?
Yes.
Okay, so don't we have to go ahead and budget for the ten?
We discussed that after we left.
Sure you did.
I can't, I can't reimburse this fund, I can reimburse County General, so when we get to County General, my advice would be budget those employees that Community Corrections is going to reimburse us for out of County General.
We discussed that after we left there tonight.
I understand, thank you.
And sharing send it, we should put in a contract, they pay us upfront.
So then at this point, we'd all agree we're done with jail lit?
Yeah.
I hope.
Well, me too. Okay, so now somebody want me to look up when we, what we pledged for that women's work release?
Yeah, I think there were two separate occasions.
Okay, I'd have to go back through all the minutes, I hate to do that right now.
Please come back now, I think, I think we put up a million dollars out of rainy day. And they put up, work release put up five hundred thousand.
Kelly, would you go find him? Go find him.
It's pretty small.
Good luck. Would you go get him?
Okay.
Thanks.
So are we getting ready to move a budget, or we had another meeting to do that? We still got things to go through.
We'll go from here.
Yeah.
Dale, what's the number that we promised out of rainy day fund towards the women's facility, what was the amount?
I can't remember it as I recall.
See, that's what I thought it was. Do you remember when, about the timeframe, so I can look at some minute meetings about the timeframe we would have done there? When did we start?
Well, on both occasions, John Park was here, so.
He was?
It'd been two years ago.
John's been gone longer than that.
Yeah, because he came up with the plan to build the building in the first place.
So I think, I think that was at the, it was in twenty twenty-two at some point. I could have sworn there were two different occasions, but. Well, any case, we had kind of water over the dam at this point. What are the thoughts on putting one point five in there for the Commissioners and seven thousand in there for the, from our surplus in rainy day fund to take care of the sheriff's vehicles for one year? It gives our budget down hundreds, one point five plus the seven equals five five seven. And in my opinion, the only thing you can put in there is something that's like a, like a infrastructure improvement, vehicles, something that's not typically going to be reoccurring year of year like salaries. You don't want to be taking salaries out of rainy day fund because that's not sustainable. But if we, if we keep doing what we're doing here, and saving money, you build a new surplus, that the money is earmarked for the Commissioners for the projects they need to do, and it's earmarked for Chad. Damn it, Zach. Oh, that was on TV.
Yeah.
Did you bleep it up? Does that make sense Dale?
Yes. I, I follow you on that. Bottom line is, Mike, you guys cannot spend all money yet coming in.
That's right.
We all know that, we know that.
Well, then don't do it, okay?
We won't.
You've got to let off the gas on some of this stuff.
We have to bounce a budget.
Going through all of County General, I don't see anything else that could be done the same thing with. The biggest one would be some of the Commissioners' budget, I don't see anything in there other than what I just said, the one point five million from there. And as long as it doesn't impact Zach's ability to buy vehicles, move the seventy over there. Out blue, out blue wood.
How much more we need to cut?
Does that make sense Jane?
I'm sorry, I'm still reading minutes, just trying to find out how much you pledged from the rainy day fund, what, what did you say?
If we move the one point five from the Commissioners to the building for basically the tuck pointy and they pose their maintenance, that the boilers, and seventy thousand for Zach's vehicles into their rainy day fund. Does that make sense?
The boilers are run between seventy and eighty-five, I think, Mike, I think we're getting bids in on, well, we've got a bid for sixty-some thousand, another for eighty-some, don't we?
Did Jane answer the question first?
I, I, I don't, I don't see the moving the vehicles into rainy day because if you're going to let them buy vehicles, that's too quick to try to move that money back and forth. I bet the one point five million, I think, makes sense.
Well, I was trying to get us down to five hundred thousand to where we wanted to be, is it going at nine point six right now?
I thought, I thought he still has seventy thousand in vehicles for, in, in the Sheriff's budget.
That's what I thought.
In County General.
It's the only place I have it.
But that's part of what Mike's talking about moving now.
He wants to move it out of the Sheriff's and put it into rainy day, take it out and then move the seventy thousand into rainy day fund surplus.
Trying to get us down to that nine point one figure, nine million figure. That's all I'm trying to do. Jane said the other day, we can work with seven million surplus. It doesn't do us any good if it's just sitting there not doing anything, we think that we could use it for like building improvements, so, so forth, so on.
I have a feeling next year that's going to be reduced quite a bit, Mike.
We could.
Can I ask a question on the survey account? Jane, is the, hasn't State Board of Councillors adopted a rule in the last twelve months about building in additional requests on your budget?
They, they have cautioned us against doing additional, yes, the overuse of additional appropriations, is that what you asked?
So if you're in order to get where you want to be, if you move known future costs out of your budget, knowing you're going to be having these things come up as additional appropriations, I think they, they are seriously dis- discouraging that.
Certainly a lot by five million because we, we set up a fund that rainy day fund years ago for just, for rainy day fund, we didn't say.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not okay, except not even the rainy day fund, but if you're, you take anticipated call.
I think the issue is the seventy thousand that he's, he's getting that, the State Board of Councillors would likely have.
No, I think it's part of the whole thing, it's already, their budget was for a million for tuck pointy, five hundred thousand for the boilers, we know that.
Well, I mean, some, I mean, some of that, some of that may not be necessary. Five hundred thousand's high, three hundred for money, you know?
Well, again, Bob, it's just surplus dollars sitting there, whether they use the whole amount, they don't use the whole amount, it doesn't matter.
Well, I want to bring that up, but I'm not the one that has to deal with those people, the county auditor does. And I know she doesn't like being ripped apart from.
Dale, on your, Commissioner, page eleven. Why do we have to appropriate so much money right now for the million dollars repair for, for, why do we have to do so much now, why can't we just do half of that?
I've given you a quote there for the four tuck, which can give you a very close as to what it costs to do, at least a year's worth. I'm sure being north, but it's there.
Did you see this Dale?
Yeah, he saw it, he's got one.
Yes, yeah. It is, are you putting, are you submitting that in the form of a bid, Jim?
No, I can't bid Dale, you know that, you know I can't.
It's an example of how much cheaper it can be.
It's, it's an analysis that I've done research to figure out, I've been over and discussing with the masons over at the Shell Station, how to do it, that's what they do, they're professionals. I'm taking their advice and I'm putting a pencil to it, that's all I did.
Do you think those people would be willing to do that at that rate?
He says that it can be done at that rate. Now, are they going to come in and do it? No, we're going to have to hire people to do it for a six-month period, weather period. He said, he's telling me where to get the people.
I'll take a serious look at it, I would be tickled to death to be able to get that work done at those rates.
I put the pencil to it, I've done my research. And I've gone out and tried to enlist the professionals that do that.
I'll check in on that.
And if you want further conversation, we can sit down and have a little more in-depth conversation, try to put our ideas together.
Trick is getting people to do the work.
Well, you, you hired on out of professional trades. That's what those people are in there, they're in there setting, they're waiting for somebody to hire them. He's even given, and I didn't write the name, he's down, I don't remember if the guy's named Park, he says there's a gentleman here in town. Said maybe tickle to death to do it, just retired. Which would be great.
So we could take your building repair way down.
Yeah, I remember Sandy Hook, Kentucky. I started out as an apprentice plumber on the new fistion plant up here that had an addition on. And they were hiring people that were Sandy Hooking, they went in a pipe or inch deal, they were making twice as much money as I was, they didn't know what they were doing. Money ain't the issue, do you know what you're doing? I mean, yeah, we can, we can get them.
Bob, I'm, I'm hiring people out, I'm hiring professionals, okay?
From where?
Out of the trades group, the same people that.
Trades group, they assign them, you don't, they, they got their list of people.
Can I speak, excuse me? I've hired, he's hired, this gentleman is hiring the same people performing the, the work that's being done on the Shell Station over at Thirty's and Bank. Is he going to hire people in there that don't know what they're doing? He's the man that's recommending me where to go find the people to do the job. He knows what he's doing. He's running that job over there. I mean, I deal with employees every freaking day. I know what it's like.
We've been in the business for, what, how many years, fifty?
Been in it fifty-two years, I deal with employees every day, I hire and I fire constantly. I understand when I hire an employee, if he has the ability to do the job. I know what I'm doing. And I'm trying to make a recommendation to save the taxpayers money. Nobody, nobody can follow it.
So Dale.
It's easy.
Let's cut that way down.
Okay, I don't know what it's like to be in your position. Do what you have to do. I'm not going to berate you for adopting a balanced budget.
The price you're getting for tuck pointy is six hundred and nine thousand, is that right Dale?
Six hundred thousand dollars is what he's got. That's the quote to go in there, we don't have to do nothing. People going into, why can't we put a little legwork to it? And save five hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, whatever we can save. But we don't want to put any legwork to it.
Maybe twenty-five cents, who knows?
We don't want to put any legwork to it, we want everybody else to do it.
And we're still waiting for three bids for a boiler, Tim, you're going to get us, you haven't got them done yet, but we got them.
I don't have the spec. Okay? If I had the spec, I would look, yes. I'd spend hours looking.
We did.
You know, it, it. I don't know, I don't know, you know, I, Tracy gave us a, a list of thirty items that are, have been neglected. You know, there's probably an easy million dollars there to spend on that stuff.
Is it neglect, Tim, or is it a lack of funding?
Well, you've got a million dollars in here you want, so it's evidently not a neglect of funding.
You haven't passed it yet.
I understand that, but you're asking for it, and, and.
That's what we do every year, we ask for money, and there's never enough money to go around, there never has been, and there will be.
We don't even know how much, we don't even know how much it would take. I've asked Tracy, give me a timeline, give me some pricing so we can look at this number here, but we can't get it. I asked for that two weeks ago.
Well, I think really that could be considered, I, I think that would be an overvitalist act on your part.
Why's that?
Because it's not your job.
Does it involve money?
Yes.
Okay, then it is my job. If it involves money, yes sir, it is our job.
But you can't sign the contract.
I can't sign the contract, but it is our job.
You get serious about the budget living off, off the back.
Well, we know what we're going to try to get done.
You can assure yourself of one thing, we're not going to spend, we do not spend on anything that is not necessary, or at least.
Okay, then why did she give us a list of thirty items? Were those not necessary? I've gone through and described every one of them and asked, all I'm asking, is there a timeline? Is there a plan? How much does it cost? I can't get that.
Well, you don't know how much these jobs cost until you build them out.
Absolutely. Absolutely, who's bidding, who's looking for the bids, who's out there looking for the? Who's out there looking for the people that are repairing?
Let's get back on budget, then we'll talk about that after the budget.
All right, fine with me, fine with me.
Jane, any recommendations before we need to go?
Fine with me, fine with me.
Did we cover the courthouse expenses yet?
We've got it once through, through all of the budgets.
We've gone through the courthouse, we've gone through the judges, Superior Court, Circuit Court. Have we made any cuts on any of that?
We went, we went through, first pass, yes, and made cuts as we went through.
I have another question on EDG funding. Are we going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on EDG? Scott, you know more about that than probably any of us.
I thought we cut that. Well, you know, I do have an issue with the city about how they will use EDG and not pay for it. They haven't, they haven't, they haven't put up any money for it in a long time. And yet they've got the gall to come over here and ask us to help the TV three. I'm not happy about that. And, and, you know, Dale and I both serve on that board. And Dale will tell you that in twenty, I joined in January of twenty-two, and in mid-twenty-two, I went to the board and said, you know, look, I think we've got three or four problems here that we need to try to work on. And I've seen a lot of improvement in two areas. And I'm happy about that. And one of the things that I'm happy about too is that we've, we've taken a much bigger role in regional efforts.
We.
We, meaning Fayette County, okay?
You do the economic development?
The regional planning commission.
It's been in existence for years already?
It's been in existence since 2016. And.
Now you're saying that.
Fayette County's been involved in that since.
Uh, no, wait a minute, I understand that. But it's been pretty much run in Richmond until recent, okay?
Recently being?
The last couple of years, okay? And now a lot of it is based in the Fayette County. And I'm very, I'm very happy about that because I think there's, there's a, there's an emphasis to make sure that there's, it's not so Wayne County-centric, you know? It's very.
What's Fayette County getting for a permit now?
Well, keep in mind too, I want you to keep in mind that from, from an economic development standpoint, there is a, an effort at the state level to, to want to maximize the efficiency of, of grant dollars. And they like regional efforts.
Yeah, they've been pushing that model for several years.
Right, exactly. And so I'm very, I'm very happy about that part of it. I don't know any other entity that we've had in this community that has subsisted on the same amount of public assistance for over thirty years. And the recent acquisition of Nova will offer our community millions more in payroll than we've ever spent on economic development in over thirty years.
What now that?
The payroll of Nova by 2026, the payroll of Nova will be millions of dollars more than we have ever spent on economic development in over thirty years.
And Nova's here because of Chad?
I didn't say that.
I understand.
Here's, here's what I'm saying about that. Here's, here's what I'm saying about that. Chad found them, kept them on the line for two years, and I'm very happy about that. But one of the issues was a lack of working together between the mayor's office and the economic development group. And that was a city decision. That project went nowhere for the first two years. It really wasn't until economic development got involved that something happened. Now, the only thing the city did to, to, in terms of incentives, were tax abatements. Well, duh, we could have done that thirty years ago. It was the state tax credits that EDG helped bring in that got that deal done. And there was, the only thing I think that the city did, other than tax abatement, was, was planned utility improvements out to, to that facility. And they were going to have to do that to make it a viable location anyway. So they didn't do anything special. Now, Chad does deserve a lot of credit for finding them and keeping them on the line. But they've had a lot of issues in starting projects and not being able to finish them. And this is one of those occasions where it took EDG to get involved before it got done. And I'm just, I'm glad that they're working together better now. But I also want them to start paying their fair share of it, right? So, but again, the problem is until we get a lot of these situations fixed with the city, whether it be inter-local agreements or whatever else, you know, we've got to pick up a load. And so I'm, I'm in favor of, of giving them an increase that they haven't, I mean, they've subsisted on the same amount of money, eighty thousand dollars, for over thirty years.
How much money does EDG have?
They get about, two-thirds of their income comes from the public assistance, and about a third from rentals that they have with the building over there.
How much money do they have?
How much is that?
I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head. But I've, I've had a talk with the treasurer, you know, they wouldn't be able to last long term without the public assistance. Not to mention the rentals are down over there right now.
I guess, what I've seen, our return on our investment in the last five, six years has actually been, what I've seen has been nothing. I mean, I sit here and I watch Rushville.
Yeah.
I watch the east side of Richmond, Newcastle, and Conover sits right here in the middle of it. And we get, we got one in the last.
What's the common, what's the common thing in all of those?
Ten years.
What's the common denominator in every single one of those we just talked about?
Right. Common denominator.
Roads, access.
So what? It's, it's tough, it's tough to get to Rushville from the interstate two, and it's either tougher to get to Rushville from seventy-four.
I mean, if you go on threes, you can get these tracks.
I mean, Ford sat right here and operated for years with semi running up and down State Road One, and it's worse than it was now. And now, well, so you're saying that State Road One's reading Ford moved out?
Yeah, part of it, yeah.
No, it's not.
That's interesting, since it got moved.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Let's get back to budget. I agree with Mike.
This is budget, Bob. I'm looking at a hundred thousand dollars to EDG.
I, I've gotten several phone calls and texts complaining about EDG.
Never, I've never talked to anybody on the street that has good word to say about EDG.
A lot of people complain about Conover County Council too.
Well, here's, the, you know, when I was, when I was in that role thirty-some odd years ago.
Build a building when you was in that role.
Huh?
I built a building when you was in that role.
And there was some, we had a commissioner here by the name of Russ Seidel. You remember Russ? And I'm telling you, Russ was an authority on my side. Man, and if he could have killed the economic development then, he would. Well, I always liked Russ anyway, because I, I mean, I knew where I stood with him. And years later, toward the end of his life, he moved out to Missouri to be closer to his daughter. He, he came back for an event that I attended. And we were talking about the old days, and I was kidding around with him, and I said, Russ, you know what I always liked about you? I knew where I stood with you. You didn't, you didn't want to stab me in the back, you wanted me to watch as the blade went in. And I kind of laughed it off, and he got real serious on me. And he said, you know, I'm sorry about that. I swear to God, I put a lie detector on me, this is what the man said. I'm real sorry about that. And I kind of looked around, like, you've got to be kidding me. What, what are you talking about now? And he said, well, I, I live out in Branson, Missouri now. And he said, what's Branson, Missouri? He said, somebody built something, and they all got on the same page. And he said, now I understand what economic development can do. And he said, I'm sorry that I wasn't part of the solution. And it took a lot, I think, for Russ to say that. But I got to tell you, I'm really disappointed that thirty years later, we're still, I mean, Russ's thought back then was backward from back then. And it's disappointing that we're having to have the same argument thirty years later.
Well, I'll tell you what, Scott, we.
And the thing is, if we don't have economic development, what's our point?
Well, I believe we have to have an economic, that you and I discussed once before, I do believe we need an economic development presence.
Okay.
And, and I'm all for that.
Okay.
But the direction that it has gone in the last five years, I see nothing for our investment.
Okay.
When I'm looking, when I'm looking at Rushville.
Okay, so let me ask you then, what, what's, what's, what would your scenario be? I mean, you, you just said you want to have an economic development presence. I'm not tied to a particular organization, but I am tied to have it in presence.
I believe we have to have a presence.
We've got to have a presence.
I agree.
We cannot depend on the mayor's office to do it, because mayors come and go. And in Conover's history, there's never been anyone to be elected three consecutive times, right? Mayors come and go, they all have their strengths and weaknesses.
Absolutely.
We cannot depend on that mayor's office to take care of it for us. So what's, and at this point, because we have a much more visible presence in the region, when we talk about making substantive changes here, we're potentially disrupting east central Indiana.
Yeah.
Well, hang on.
Why?
Well, because, because our, our leadership right now is, is coming from east central, from Fayette County. So it can be disruptive to that process. So my question is, what's your scenario that makes that better?
How can it be any more disruptive than what we are experiencing over the last five years with zero return on our investment in economic development? I can tell you.
The return's coming. The return's coming with Nova. Wouldn't it happen without them?
Well, but that's, you know, in the, but in the last five years, that's one in five years.
Well, but, but the one pays for everything we've done for thirty years, Tim.
Well, we're trying for economic development right now, that's why the mayor put through the TIF. Now, we have fought him on that, the way it was put together, but that's why I want to know why in the world they're not helping with the economic development, because we're through it.
And, 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 I mean, you're right, they've got to step up.
They've got to step in there, because the TIF is a good idea if you bring business into the community.
Well, TIF used properly is a good thing, right?
Correct, correct. Okay, right, Scott, we've fought it, we know.
The, the problem with the TIF that they put in was that it was just too big, okay? And, and, you know, when I first got to the economic development office, there were no incentives at all. I mean, and they were arguing about tax abatement.
Let's just be honest about something. Our community has stepped on their own feet too many times. You talk about Russ Seidel.
Well, and I don't mean to disparage.
I'm not going to disparage, but I'm telling you what this county did.
Right.
I remember 2008, and everything was crashing, and all of a sudden the state leached the highway up north by Chicago to an out-of-the-country firm. We had millions of dollars for the communities to put roads in, and Mike was right, roads. I went to Rushville, I went to Richmond, I went to Newcastle, everything, boy, they were building roads. I'm like, why aren't we? It said on Russ's desk, we didn't do a darn thing about it.
Well, and, you know, years ago.
We could have had roads all over Fayette County, but we didn't do it.
Years ago, folks were talking about how we needed to have a connector between seventy and seventy-four. And I told them to shut up, because if, if they ever did anything like that, they would not use State Road One. They'd use State Road Three. It's a shorter distance, it's straighter, it's flatter, made more sense.
Well, let's get back.
And that wouldn't help us.
Are we still want to talk about it?
So, and so anyway, I guess my, my question still is, if you don't want to spend a hundred thousand for, for EDG, or eighty thousand, or whatever you want to do, what's the point?
I think we need to split that between the city.
Let's, what? I would like to. We're not going to make a decision on it tonight.
So you're going to give economic development money?
I would.
Say what?
Thank you, buddy. Economic development, they just don't give to economic development projects.
Um, yeah, they get a portion of the economic development income tax, do they not? Yeah?
Yeah.
They just don't give any. That's right. But they have to use it on what they call economic development projects.
Well, during my tenure, the only thing they've used it on.
Has been the pool, right?
Paid for the half a million dollars they owed on a pool renovation project.
And that's ending.
And that's now coming to an end, so we can use more of that money on our side.
Mm-hmm.
Because the agreement was made a number of years ago between city officials and county officials to honor that agreement.
If, if it's Scott and I, or anybody wants to get together next day or so, if you've got the time.
We'll see, I'm still having some tests run.
All right, and do, educate me, do me a little more discussion on that.
All right.
Yeah, but we haven't got a budget yet.
I'm going on.
That's right.
I'm done, Bob. I'm done on that.
Back on page eleven, I think we need to cut that million in half.
We've already cut it down to six hundred and nine thousand. I think that's what we have for a bid right now on the tuck point, isn't it, Dale?
Yeah, we have, we do have one bid.
For around six hundred thousand dollars.
We leave it in there, if we don't move it, we're about one point, we're almost two million dollars over budget.
How much?
Two million.
Well, we already.
We'll move that down.
Okay, I'm sorry, you guys are on the commissioner's budget?
I guess so.
And what are you talking about right now?
Tuck point, a million dollars.
Four oh six oh one.
You'd already taken it out. We, we have fifty thousand in there instead of a million.
How much?
We left fifty thousand in there, is what was said the other night.
On account four oh six oh one?
Yeah, and then on three oh five oh oh, the repair of equipment, we're now have the boilers for the courthouse and the jail, we took that from five hundred down to fifty.
Okay.
So that nine point six number already include it taking out a million and a half.
Okay.
Okay, again, you were saying three oh five oh oh?
I was looking at the wrong copy.
Yeah. The three oh five oh oh, the court commissioners requested five hundred, and we dropped that down to fifty.
Fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now what happens when, when, when the commissioners have? Okay, now what happens when, when, when the commissioners have, decide that they're gonna buy boilers, what do we do?
Well, what was discussed the other night, we were gonna set aside that million and a half into rainy day, and then they could come in and get their money out of rainy day.
Okay, okay.
Because they'll all cost probably around $2.50 at most.
Well, I mean, the boiler's gotta be, it's gotta be done.
One right now, the other two can be done.
When we finally get to the point that we reach a price that they feel like's acceptable?
We're getting three of them, we'll cut all three of them. And honestly, I called some boiler people, they weren't interested. They didn't have time. We don't want the job.
I've had contractors back out before. They said, I'll do the job, and then for a while later, they said, no.
You know what, had an old, big company, said, that boiler's in, they said, no, we ain't got time for it. I said, I need one now, you may get two more, that's okay, we're not interested.
Talk to anybody for good?
I'd like to make a motion to recess and come back another evening.
You made a motion, you want recessed, come back again?
Yeah, come back another evening, yes.
You have a second?
I'll say.
We've had a motion, a second to recess and reset another meeting to come back to. All those in favor signify a second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Hang on. Yes, Gregor Payton? Patterson?
Yes.
Wolf?
I'm here, no.
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes. Come back and get the budget done.
Oh, my God. Here you go. Huh?